All right, good evening everyone and welcome to our work session April 7th, 2020. Please call the roll.
Mayor Brewer.
Here.
Mr. Scho.
Here.
Ms. Wyatt?
Here.
Mrs. Monroe?
Here.
Mr. Messer?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Mattsner?
Here.
All right, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, what we will do is we'll turn it over to you Scott.
All right, thank you Mayor. And this is a regularly scheduled work session for City Council. There are no previous business items, so moving on to new business. The first item is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Rackenboller Excavating in the amount of $623,846.70 for the downtown pedestrian safety improvement project. This project is being supported by an ODOT Safety Fund grant. I think it's funding 90% and it just focuses on various intersection improvements through our downtown. It's also going to add a protected left turn signal at the intersection of Main and Broadway, which I know has been a big topic of discussion. So various improvements throughout our downtown district just to improve overall safety.
Where is the mid-block crossing?
So that is between, on Broadway, between Main and Mulberry, kind of in the vicinity of where the ice cream parlor is.
Okay, thank you. And is the left turn, if you're going south on Broadway, turning left on Main?
That would be on, if you're heading east-west on Main Street.
On Main, going left on Broadway?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
Isn't there a left turn lane there already?
Not, there's not a protected left arrow there.
What, oh, the arrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
In the city, yes.
There is a left-hand turn lane, just no arrow.
Right, not a protected left turn arrow.
Gotcha.
Arrow in the light.
Yep.
Okay. I don't travel that way very often.
No.
Yep.
There is a left turn lane, you're correct.
Anything else? Okay.
Need a sponsor for that?
I'll sponsor.
By the way, that wasn't really accurate estimate. The engineer made on that one, like 450 bucks.
He hit that one. The next item is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Elix in the amount of $217,021.40 for the bypass 48 Kings You Drive Traffic Signal Replacement Project. Again, there was a summary sheet on this. This is funded out of our electric fund. It was a budgeted item. We've been trying to kind of do one signal upgrade a year to address outdated signals and this was on our radar. So this is kind of the next one.
I'll sponsor.
Yeah, I'll go in on that one also.
Okay. The next item is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Jim Clark Excavating in the amount of $296,743 for the Colonial Park Regional Retention Pond Project. There was a summary sheet on this as well. A couple of things. This project is essentially providing the stormwater retention and stormwater quality requirements for several projects along the North Broadway Corridor, our new fire station, the Warren County Event Center, and the 511 North Broadway Development. In addition to that, it is a project that was recommended in our park's master plan. So we worked with the EPA because the, you know, those sites along North Broadway had really limitations in terms of the acreage in the area to do these onsite stormwater retention ponds. We felt like we could consolidate that, build it in our park and make it a park amenity while still addressing the requirements per the EPA.
Is there any idea what the depth of that pond is going to be?
Think it's-
It is retention, right?
Yeah, it's a retention and I want to say the water depth is eight feet max.
I've got a couple of groups that are interested in it. Like we talked about a fishing dock for handicap accessible.
The thought would be, it would be fishable, which is something we've had requests for.
Okay, that's awesome. I'll sponsor that.
Just had a question. We have access off of Broadway where it says, where it has the little Y of orange trails there.
So some of those trails are proposed and not existing. I know the map that was included, there's, the access to the area is from behind the post office, the swing bridge. There's a parking lot there.
Right.
And on the map where it's labeled "bridge," you can walk across there. The orange where you see proposed trails, those would be future. That is more of an overlook. It is a pretty steep drop-off, but we have looked at, the city owns that property there.
Okay, that's what I didn't know.
Yeah, so the city owns that property and we did look at, you know, maybe some overlook type trails.
Okay, good.
But the main access will be from behind the post office.
And the Colonial West lot will be of access if we-
Yes, correct. And then from Colonial West as well.
That's great.
It's nice. Under budget?
Yes, yeah.
Always like that?
Yep. The next item is a, really, the next three items are all associated with the same project. So item D is a resolution authorizing the city manager to approve the petition and supplemental plan for PACE project financing of the Leo Brown Group Traditions of Lebanon Senior Living Development. And then the next item, which is item E, is an ordinance which allows the city to proceed with certain improvements, or allows a developer to proceed with certain improvements associated with the Leo Brown Group Traditions of Lebanon Senior Living Project in cooperation with the Warren County Energy Special Improvement District, or ESID. And then item F allows those improvements to be levied as a voluntary special assessment, again, associated with the Traditions of Lebanon Senior Living Project. So if you recall, City Council, it was probably about six months ago, adopted legislation that essentially opted the city into this ESID district within the county. And what that allows development projects to do is to tap into special project financing as it relates to anything that has to do with energy efficiency with their development. So the Leo Brown Group has opted or wants to take advantage of this special financing. It does require legislation from the jurisdiction that the project is being originated from, which is why it's before City Council. We, as a city, we do not, you know, run or operate the ESID or the PACE financing. That's done through the Warren County Port Authority. So really, we're kind of a pass-through on this. The developer has kind of voluntarily decided that this is how they want to move forward with their project.
So we're not at risk?
No.
We're just facilitating?
We are just facilitating. It's the Port Authority that's really the lead on it. We, as the jurisdiction, have the ability to essentially handle some of what would traditionally be debt that the company would be taking on. They're really utilizing that debt or converting that debt into special assessments that would be placed on their property tax for a period of time and that's all administered by the county.
On your summary sheet, D, where it says it's a 50% tax abatement, how does that compare to abatements in the past that we've had?
So that would be the next item, item G.
Okay, so I'm jumping ahead of you.
I was going to cover that separately, yeah. So I guess, so items D, E, and F all relate to the PACE financing and then the next one would be the actual-
I'll sponsor on the PACE finance.
Okay.
Sorry, didn't mean to jump ahead.
That's okay, yeah. Okay, so item G, this is a resolution consenting to an enterprise zone agreement between the Warren County Board of County Commissioners and the Lebanon Senior Partners, or the Leo Brown Group. So the enterprise zone abatement, the way it's being structured, get the summary sheet, it's a 50% 10-year property tax abatement only on the assisted living building within this development. So this development consists of an assisted living facility and then there's 13 four-unit independent living buildings as well. Those independent living buildings are not being exempted at all. The exemption is strictly for the assisted living facility and it's a 50% abatement, which is kind of the minimum abatement over a 10-year period. So even with the abatement, the assisted living facility alone will be generating $100,000 a year in property tax. And then once that abatement period expires, that would be about $200,000 a year in property tax. In addition to their estimated annual payrolls, $2 million associated with that. So if you look at, you know, some of the other abatements, for example, the 511 North Broadway abatement was 100%. This is much more scaled, scaled down, if you will, and it does not include the independent living units.
So the fire department will get some money?
Fire Department, yes.
I mean, that's a, that's a facility that's obviously going to add to our run volume over time, so, okay.
Yeah, and that, and that was part of the rationale for why, you know, we told it from the beginning that, from staff's perspective, we did support 100% abatement on it, that, you know, we were, staff was supportive of 50% abatement. The enterprise zone agreement is essentially through the county commissioners, so, you know, this has been presented to them. They have, you know, spoken out in support of the enterprise zone agreement. Part of the challenges with this site, this site's been marketed by the same development group for over 20 years. Part of the challenges associated with it not moving into active development is just the topography of the site.
Sure.
There's additional costs associated with that. It's made it somewhat of a tough, challenging property to move into development. Obviously, this type of development, I think, not only benefits the city, but it doesn't place any additional burden on the school district in terms of kids.
Right, right. That's fair.
So it's kind of a win-win when you look at property that's already zoned residential.
Okay, I'll sponsor that.
And then item A is kind of the final piece of legislation associated with the Traditions of Lebanon Senior Living Project. So this would cap the utility related, so essentially water, sewer, electric, TAF fees for the project at $100,000. We have, I won't say typically, but we have in the past offered this as an incentive for development projects, kind of utilizing our utilities, capping the TAF fees. They will still be required to pay all of our transportation impact fees and all of our park impact fees. And I think one of the benefits to this project is the streets are private, so we're not going to have to maintain that. So we did tell the developer we would bring this to council for consideration as well.
And we're still on the, in the black on that when we-
Yeah, I mean-
I mean, we're not, we're-
Yeah, the TAF fee, the TAF fee model has changed. TAF fees essentially, you know, pay for the capacity of the treatment plants, whether it's water treatment or sewer treatment.
Okay.
We have more than adequate capacity at our wastewater treatment plant and then we've transitioned to buying our water from Cincinnati Waterworks. So the TAF fee model has changed to where we, you know, we don't envision having to do any sort of major expansions within those systems anytime soon.
Good.
Do we have a sponsor for that?
I'll go on that one. Joe too?
You can, you can have-
Joe's on there too.
I got him, okay. Okay, item I is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Supervisors Unit of the Lebanon Police Employees Association, or LPEA bargaining unit, establishing wages and contract provisions that are consistent with the other units of the LPEA. I don't know, Mark, if you wanted to kind of dive into this one, turn it over to you.
Yes, the previous two units had already voted to accept the contract terms. The Supervisors Unit is fairly small. I think there were five people in that unit.
Yeah.
And I was, we were scheduling mediation. I was contacted by the LPEA's attorney who said that those five people revoted and decided to accept the terms.
That's basically the same that we had for the officers?
It's exactly, basically the same.
Okay, I'll sponsor that.
Item J is an ordinance authorizing an extension to the project completion dates for the 511 North Broadway Avenue Redevelopment Project. The developer, and I did place at your seats tonight a draft of the ordinance. The developer has requested a 90-day extension to the dates outlined in the agreement based on, you know, the current economic situation relative to the coronavirus. Essentially, what the dates that are impacted is there's a contingency deadline date, which was April 20th, I believe, coming up soon. And that was the date where all of the various contingencies outlined in the development agreement had to be met, both city contingencies and developer contingencies. We've essentially, we have met all of those and we're actually getting ready to close a couple of weeks ago before this kind of happened. So the other deadlines are the construction commencement date, which currently, that date was established as on or before July 31st, 2020. And then the final project completion date had been established as November 31st, 2022. And that included both phases, the residential and the commercial phase. So all three of those dates would be extended by 90 days under this agreement. And again, the way the developers presented it to me is they just need a little bit of time to kind of see what the ramifications long-term of the economic situation might be with their business model.
Understandable. Sad to see that, but definitely understandable. I'll sponsor that.
Okay.
Mr. Schaefer, did you want to co-sponsor?
I sure did. Thank you.
Anybody, as many people want to sponsor it are, absolutely are allowed to, so.
I know, I know the developer's still working with his contractor, getting pricing. We're certainly hopeful that-
Challenging times.
Yeah. That this moves forward, but it's a situation we're in. The final item on the agenda is a resolution modifying the existing Small Business Development Program to allow for a Small Business Emergency Relief Program, which will provide funding assistance to qualifying small businesses impacted by the coronavirus and the economic impact. And I did email out and also put at your, at your seats, an updated kind of, you know, program guidelines, if you will, that kind of establish the criteria that would be associated with the forgivable loan. So I think most of you know, we, the city currently has a Small Business Economic Incentive Program. It was established last year. The program's set up where it's a matching grant for businesses who expand their footprint or somehow activate unused space. We started that program last year and it was just focused on downtown. This year, we expanded the program both in funding and then also made it eligible for all businesses within the community. You know, to date, we have received, there's a total of $80,000 that were budgeted for the program. To date, we have received one application for the expansion component of the, of the program, which leaves, you know, at this point, $70,000 within the allocated budget that at this point, you know, has not been allocated to any specific program or use. I think in discussions, I know there's been a lot of discussions, you know, both here and in other communities, what, what can the city do? What can we do to help small businesses? I think, you know, this program was kind of put on the table as, you know, a redirecting of this existing small business assistance program to kind of redirect at least a portion of those funds from expansion to relief and, you know, you can call it retention, I guess would be a better way to describe it. So, you know, the guidelines, you know, I think staff's perspective when we kind of put this together, we obviously wanted guidelines. Part of that is that the business would have to commit to getting their employment levels back up to where they were prior to the, you know, the coronavirus and the stay-at-home order. And it would be tailored as a forgivable loan to where if they hit those numbers by the end of August, the loan would be forgiven. It's up to $2,000, so it's relatively modest amount per business, the way it's structured. And then the thought was that the same committee that evaluates the current grant program that we have would be utilized to-
Can you identify who's on the committee? Where am I just to remind you?
So that involves, yep, that involves the mayor, Chamber of Commerce, Main Street Lebanon, we have a representative from a local bank, and then city staff. So it's kind of a combination of the business organizations, the banking industry, and then staff. But that would be the committee that would work through any sort of prioritization or ranking that would be required.
I believe Adam.
Yep.
Yeah, I was, it's, it's a really good committee that has done this. I was on it on the other side as one of the community representatives from Main Street Lebanon. And it's a very collaborative group. It takes a lot of the input and works very hard to be good stewards of those dollars. I think this is a natural outgrowth of the renovation, expansion type of mission that that was set up for. And I really appreciate the work Scott did, kind of retrofitting this to fit this need. And I like the six points there. I would like one that would, just proof of the organization making the request of availing themselves of the other sources of relief that are available.
So like, like numbers of their, of their, of their submittal numbers?
Yes.
I was thinking the same thing, yeah.
But otherwise, it fulfills the same mission and purpose of the original pot that was set up last year for this renovation expansion of, we have businesses that have been here for a long, long time that have provided key points, key anchors of inflection throughout our community and they want to grow, they want to live, and they know that the actions that they have to take are necessary. And, but sometimes they just need that little bit to get over a hump. None of the grants are really supposed to be long-term sustaining because that's not what it's for and they're also not supposed to be good money after bad. And last year, those went to the Broadway Barrel House patio expansion, which was great. It was a very good expense for the, for them, but again, they may not have had that money all upfront, but getting over that hump would do it. In the same way, it may be difficult with a lot of information coming into this committee to decide how these grants may go out, but it is still in that same spirit of the, of what was there before.
So, Adam, if I could ask you, in terms of taking some of those, your perspective on taking some of those dollars for the reinvestment, is to use some of those dollars for the, for relief and retention, your thought on that to be able to support both those initiatives?
I believe so, especially as Scott mentioned, that there's only been one request so far for, I believe I heard $7,000. That leaves a great deal more. I would foresee that there will not be as much expansion and renovation right now for those requests. And it's, so I do think that that amount currently would be enough and I'd be slow to recommend more right now until we can see what the actual effect will be on the city budget, since we're doing those, on the other end of that ledger, looking at making tough decisions because of the lack of revenue coming in.
Because my thinking is in terms of if you're doing a relief and retention versus the expansion like Barrel House did, to me, the relief and retention would be small grants in terms of no more than a $2,000 small grant for retention and relief. Limited, definitely limit the, the amount for a business that would may qualify for this. So expansion, definitely a larger dollar amount, but if we're going to go and support a, something with retention and a relief, that we maximize a grant like that for no more than $2,000 at the, I would say, at the, at the max. So.
Well, and if I could back up a little bit-
Yeah.
For, just so that we're all on the same page and for anybody that might be watching who's streaming, there are amazing amounts of government programs that have come out and it's changing like every day. There are $500 billion so far and just today, on the way home, I heard they've recommended another $200 billion. So a few of the programs that are available to the small businesses in our community currently are the Payroll, Paycheck Protection Program, PPP, which pays, they, you take your average monthly payroll, multiply that by 2.5 and that's what's given to you. They're calling it a loan, but really, they're giving it to you. You have to, you know, spend 75% of that on payroll and then it's forgiven. So that's huge. The SBA loans are being paid for six months. So if you have an SBA loan for your mortgage, or if you're just, if you're leasing and you just had it for your equipment and your restaurant or whatnot, they're making your SBA payment for you for six months, starting now, starting like this week. Sick leave is paid for, FMLA is paid for if, if a company has employees that are affected by that. There's the SBA 504 Loan Deferralment, Small Business Debt Relief Payments, the PPP I explained, Economic Injury Disaster Loan Assistance. So I, too, as some of you have hinted, would like to kind of just hit pause for at least a very short period of time and see what the heck is going on. This is an amazing amount of money that they're throwing at this and I know we're all hypothesizing about where it's coming from and what the long-term effect is going to be. I think you could take the most brilliant economist out there and he would be only able to make an educated guess at best. So Dan had very eloquently emailed us a while back saying, you know, caution with what the effect will be to the city. So I think, I just want to hit pause on that somewhat.
My question, whenever you're dealing with the federal government, is how quickly-
Yeah.
-can they get responses back, for example, on the PPP money through that program?
It's happening now, this week.
So they're getting checks?
They're going so fa, yes.
Okay.
They're going so, like literally-
Okay, because that would be, that would be a concern for me that you'd lose companies.
SBA payments are being made, already have been made this week.
Okay.
Like, it's, it's going so fast, they don't even know what's going on. It's amazing. It's kind of interesting, if you just want to kind of step back and look at it academically, you have these amazingly longstanding institutions, be it government or businesses, small, big, and huge, that are changing their processes that they've done for decades and decades and decades.
Yeah.
Changing their processes overnight because they have to. How they do business-
It's amazing what can happen when they have to.
It's amazing when you have to, what you can do. So, believe it or not, they're already making payments. They're flying. Yes, probably they'll make some mistakes because they're flying through this, but the money is actually already going out to small businesses.
Yeah, that, that was my concern because in dealing with, you know, the federal government in the past, you know-
I'm seeing it happen and I wanted to bring it up because I know everybody doesn't have a small business, so-
Yeah.
It's, it's happening already.
Mm-hmm, good.
One, one question I had, and Dan, this would be for you, as the email that you sent us, the, given the application that we have, and I'm assuming you've seen the application, does this cover everything that you sent out to us? The, do the eligibility requirements for, you've, you've paid your taxes, you're not behind on utilities, do you feel that this captured all of that?
Yes, I had a little trouble, the audio was a little spotty there, but, so Scott and Mark and Jason Malard and I spoke last week. And, you know, I still have general concerns about how we would collect the money if it were necessary, if they didn't meet the need, you know, the requirements. And quite frankly, there are, there are also issues with monitoring payroll and that can take a while. A lot of people don't report until, on a quarterly basis, but we can work around that. They would essentially be, you know, signing this disclaimer that said that, you know, we can talk about their- we can talk about their confidential information within the office. And I, I'm assuming they would be agreeable to that, that would be one of the terms. So yes, it is definitely, as we, as we've worked our way through it, my, my two concerns are more from the perception side of things. The one being on the low end, you know, does $2,000 per business really, you know, make any substantive change in, in their outlook? And I know several of you are small business owners, and several of you work for small businesses, so you can answer that a lot better than I can. But then on the upper end of things, if we're in that $40,000 to $50,000 range, and neighboring communities are doing so much potentially more than that, you know, is that going to be an issue? And then the bigger thing is, what happens to the potentially, I would think, dozens of people that are going to be turned down because the money's not available? So, just, those are just things that were, that I was concerned about from a perception standpoint.
Yeah, the optics on it is something that I, I've thought about as well. It's, I think we, I mean, maybe there's a few line items that we add for, like you can, I mean, they send you a receipt number for your, for your forms federally from the SBA, and then also the, what is that, the EDIL loan or payment advance? Based on, based on what you guys are thinking, so we, if we pass this tonight, you would expect when to be able to push payments out to qualifying businesses?
So, and a couple of things. One, I did, you know, the way, the way it's set up now, when we look at eligibility and it's worded, you know, obviously, we want to give priority to businesses who are either not eligible for state or federal grants or assistance, or for some reason, aren't able to tap into it. So some of the feedback, in, in talking to the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah.
Some of the feedback I've gotten from them, when they've gone out and talked to their small businesses, is that right now, everything's getting pushed to, you know, deal with your lender to try to tap into these federal funding sources. And some businesses don't have that relationship and are finding that difficult now. Again, that's just some of the feedback that we've gotten from, from the Chamber of Commerce. The way it's set up, and I think it was kind of set up to, to be a quick, quick turnaround in the sense of, you know, kind of providing maybe a stopgap measure. But the way it's set up now, if this were to be approved, applications would be due back to the city by April 16. So essentially, I think that's Thursday of next week. With the thought then that the, the committee would, you know, kind of convene, or we'd kind of review them and try to make decisions relatively quickly so that we could kind of move, move this thing along. So the thought is to try to be a little bit more efficient, maybe than the federal government in terms of kind of getting through and providing some assistance. But yeah, I think you're absolutely right. And the way we've set it up, you know, we're asking the question, you know, have you received federal funding? You know, I think if you've got other funding options available to you, we'd prefer to, to, you know, you continue to pursue that. But we are hearing that some businesses are, are, you know.
Yeah.
Not falling into that category, or it is loans. Whereas, you know, this would be more of a grant, forgivable loan type approach.
How are we pushing this out to the businesses in town?
Well, so far, we haven't. But we will, if, if it were to be approved, obviously, we would use, we've got contact email lists, we'd use social media, but, I mean, we've, you know, this is something that we've discussed with the Chamber of Commerce in Main Street Lebanon. And we would, we would lean heavily on those organizations, because that's really what they're supposed to be doing.
But if, if businesses are not a part of either one of those groups, how do they? I don't want to make this look like we're favoring.
No, I mean, we'll put it out on our social media, we'll put it out on our website, but we'll use them as well. So we'll use every communication tool that we have. But there is going to be some responsibility on the part of the business community to kind of look at what's happening here locally as well.
I just want to make sure it's fair and extended to everybody, whether they're members of this organization or that organization.
Right.
Or not.
Well, and just to ask a question, you know, you listed number six on the outline, a priority will be given to businesses not eligible for federal or state programs. So, I mean, without naming names, who is not eligible? Like, literally, if you were in business prior to March 1st of 2020, you're eligible, unless you have more than 500 employees.
Right.
So everybody's eligible.
Right.
So that was my, that was my next question, Wendy. So everybody is going to be eligible to a point, is, and I might be looking at, because you guys keep on mentioning, like, number six, so I might be looking at the, the, the hard copy that was in the packet. I'd probably have to pull up on my email, the adjusted one. But if, if someone's going to put no, they have not been, they have not received or have been approved yet, and then all of a sudden, they do get approved, what's, what's going to be our position there?
That's a good question.
And that could be modified to apply. You know, I, I think that's, I think that's part of the discussion. Because you're right, somebody may not have been approved at this point, but subsequently would be, based on however quickly the, you know, the federal government gets through the review process. And I will say, I think when we looked at doing this, I don't know that there's going to be a perfect system. I mean, if you look at what other communities have done, and I've talked to Springboro, you know, they're kind of going the, we're just going to go out and buy gift card routes.
Which I don't support.
So that's, you know, we've tried to, you know, they've just kind of, they've kind of taken that approach. We, we've tried to put a little bit more, you know, parameters around this, if you will, as opposed to, you know, what other communities have or are considering doing.
Did I, did I hear correctly that there's a separate committee that essentially holds the purse for, for this program?
There's a separate committee that includes the city that makes scoring, like will score and evaluate the application. So city council approves the funding for it. But there's.
Are there any outs, are there any outside fund sources that, that's a part of this, 80,000, now 70?
No.
No, this is within the city, the city budget. And that, I mean, yeah.
City budget.
Okay, so we, so we have a committee, we have a committee of non-city people that are holding the purse for the city?
No. We have a combined group of the Chamber of Commerce, Main Street Lebanon, myself, city staff. Am I missing anybody?
So there are city representatives, but I think his point is, there are city representatives, but it is not a city-only.
Decision, yeah.
We are part of the decision.
Yeah.
And Dan, Dan, a big question for you. I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, Mark, go ahead.
Hey, Mark, make sure you talk a little louder, I'm having a little bit of struggle hearing.
I didn't understand what you said.
Yeah, she wants you to speak up.
Oh, gotcha.
Thanks.
This might, this might be a question for you, Dan. Do, do we foresee, or do you see anything in the pipeline that would, for, for government grants or funds coming into the municipalities that, that we, that we then use in, in a situation like this? Where we can distribute based on our, our own processes?
Don't hold your breath.
I know, and Scott may have more information, Mark as well. I know that the Ohio Municipal League right now is very concerned about the impact this is having on local governments. And they're working and lobbying and seeing what's available. A couple of the things that I can tell you, just having been through, not similar to this, but other types of things that, that we can expect, though, is, the first thing that's going to happen is that the state is going to start cutting local government funds. That's going to happen very soon because they're going to be extremely affected by this and sales tax loss. That, that happens immediately, so they'll be facing that immediately. So I'm concerned about that. But yeah, definitely, there, there's definitely some advocacy on our behalf. I don't know if Scott's heard anything else in terms of details. And I know there's also, we're also tracking our expenses, and there's the possibility of getting some of our own City Lebanon expenses related to this reimbursed.
I, yeah.
Go ahead.
I was going to ask, I mean, based on our own modeling, looking at companies like Advix who have shut down for two, three weeks, what does that do? We extrapolate that across our entire industrial process or field? And then what does that look like down the line for us?
We're, we're trying to do a little modeling on that right now. We feel good about April because most of the money we get in April is from.
Yeah, previous.
Withholdings from March, so we're going to be on a month lag. So basically, by mid-May, we're going to see kind of the immediate impact of what these layoffs are. You know, presumably, and, and the thing I was concerned about, to see some, someone like Advix, and I know they're one of the larger employers, but just to see how quickly that happened, you know, was, was a surprise to me. But one of the unintended consequences of some of this stuff that will affect us is that we have several hundred people every month who don't pay their utility bill on time already, and several hundred are faced with a shut-off, and most of them end up paying. But when you start telling people that are already having difficulty paying their bill that they don't have to pay it for three months, or whatever that period of time happens to be, they're not going to have the money three months from now to pay it. So I'm concerned about that side of it, there's, there's just a lot of moving parts here. And, and I, and I've said to Scott, and I, I haven't heard much out of Warren County yet, but they're in the same boat as the state. King's Island isn't opening anytime soon, none of these hotels have anybody staying in them, none of these restaurants are going to be open. And a place like Warren County is reliant on two, two big things. One being sales tax, which is going to dry up immediately. And then the second thing is the lodging tax, they get a big portion of that. And as we know, nobody's traveling, nobody's staying anywhere. So there's definitely going to be a, a real kind of global effect, in my opinion. And I'm not hearing anything yet out of Warren County as to what approach they're taking to kind of address some of that stuff, too. So, does that help?
Yeah, so lots and lots of uncertainty.
Yes.
Yes, yes. I, if, if I look at the, the, basically the spirit of what we're doing, and to, kind of to your point, Dan, with the, with the $2,000, we're, we're looking at basically supporting our very, very, I mean, I would say, very small businesses. People with one employee, one to two employees, with a lease of, of maybe a thousand to $1,500 a month. So if you're, which is our core, I mean, our basic, our core downtown area. So I think for them, it's, I mean, I've, I've already applied for all the federal stuff. I haven't heard, I haven't heard anything about anything from anybody. And, I mean, I was supposed to get my $10,000 advance five days ago. So if, if expediency is our thing, and supporting those, those extremely small businesses who, who aren't going to possibly get the luxury of having a landlord that's going to just push off their, their lease for a couple of months, I can't imagine someone doing that to somebody, but I'm sure those, those people are out there. The, I think this is where this, this program is going to, is going to come in very effective for them. I did have a question in regards to the, how, how we are going to understand payroll. Because I, I mean, I know from a couple of businesses, they're trying to still maintain, even though they're shut down, they're still maintaining their staff, and they're still paying their staff. They're not going to be able to do that forever. How would that, how would we interact with, with those type of numbers? If, if basically, they, they, they get this, they get this, this grant from the city, and there's not really a, a visual, I mean, it's just basically, it, it keeps them at a flat line. They didn't furlough anybody, they didn't fire anybody, they, they didn't bring anybody back. Everybody's just gone, and they're still maintaining their pay. How, how would we, how would we deal with that from a committee point of view if we're, if we're dispersing these loans, or dispersing these grants?
What do you think of that, Scott?
So there's kind of two criteria that we've identified. One is, you know, the employee layoffs or the personnel reductions. The other criteria is the 50% or more loss of income. So I think, you know, we could look at, you know, instead of it being an and, it could be an or. But I think we tried to identify two different criteria, the, the employee, you know, payroll wages, but then also the overall business income.
And I didn't see the release, I don't know if you put that in our packet or not. Are, are they going to be required to, to come back and show that with the bank statements? Or payroll, how are we, how would we basically go into that?
Yeah, I mean, they're going to have to provide documentation. And then we also, I think, to, to some of Dan's concerns that he had expressed, you know, we did include on the application, essentially, you know, certifying that they're authorizing the finance director to, you know, access and review business payroll numbers. You know, and that's something that obviously would kind of stay with Dan in terms of his evaluation. But yeah, they're going to have to provide documentation on that. You know, both the, you know, the business loss and/or the, you know, changes in payroll. And then is your question, are they going to have to then document at the end of the August, August 30th period? Are they going to have to document then that they've, you know, built back up their employee levels? Was that your question?
It's really hard for me to understand what you're saying.
Okay. Well, I think there's two, I mean, they have to, they have to document the laws, but then they're also going to have to provide final documentation that they built their, you know, that their pre-virus employee levels or wage levels are back up by the end of August.
I kind of, I kind of used to be in favor of that, but we're talking $2,000 as a cap. It's, it's almost not worth putting people through so much for so little.
I think that's a council discussion.
Yeah, that's a point.
Open for discussion, right.
But I also, I'm also stuck on, I don't like that there's a committee out there essentially that is making the final decision. It's fine for the regular program, but this kind of special circumstance, I don't think that we should be relinquishing that power to a committee where, you know, we, we at least are held accountable for our decisions up here. And, you know, if you're talking about taxpayer dollars, I don't think that it should be coming from, it should be spent by a committee.
With the same pot of money.
The main decision maker in that, in that process.
Coming out of the same pot of money, it would do if it was the, it was the same fund that they would make decisions on regardless. It's the same pot of money, the 80,000 is the same money.
As the expansion money.
Yeah, for the expansion, same committee. That would make that.
That approves.
That are different in that committee.
I see your point, though, I, I see your point. I think maybe you're like, well, you know, it's okay when it was just like, all the sun is shining, it's all good times, and we want to be generous and have this special program. But you're, are you saying it's, this is just, it's more serious now, and let's really analyze this? And is that the best way to do it? Are you suggesting it go to council?
I'd, I'd prefer that. If you're talking about taxpayer dollars, at least we are, we are the faces of that. And I don't, I don't want some committee to be making those calls on who gets, who gets funds and who doesn't. It's, and I'm, I'm just saying it's fine for the business as usual program, you know. But we're, we're not, we're not dealing with business as usual right now. Special set of circumstances, and I think that each, each one should be looked at on a case-by-case basis if we are going to. if we are gonna give away money to businesses affected. And I kind of think that, you know, some of these businesses are booming. They're, who are also eligible for some of these other programs. But I think, I think kind of our prioritization should be for those businesses that have shut down.
Well, and the form does say, does try to capture what their economic impact was. So if a company was in a sector that was doing well, they're not going to get it. But I'm not disagree, I'm not disagreeing with what you say, but they do try to capture that. But on the form, the one thing that I have an issue with on the form is we're allowing them to determine the period of economic impact. So I'm wondering if you're going to do it, if it should be a specific date? All the other programs, and I'm not saying we have to do it the way they are, they have a specific date, because otherwise you're gonna manipulate it. I think we need to give them a date, like, well, you know, you know, I think we need to give them a date, instead of letting them determine what the economic impact period was.
Yeah, we talked about that. I think at one point, we were looking at March 1st as maybe that line of, you know, starting in March when things, you know, when the economic impact hit. But yeah, we're certainly, I mean, that's a good point. We could definitely change that.
I would agree with them being versus being, tweaking it, being as specific, that there's no flexibility there, that we're very consistent and specific. So I definitely would agree with that. And I think if we were to do this, that it could show definitely more stricter requirements.
And the other question is, it's listed, it's like, how many part-time employees do you have? Would you need to look at it as full-time equivalents? Because having 20 employees that work, you know, six hours each is different than 20 employees that work, you know, 28 hours each. So that might be something to get a little more specific on as well.
You're suggesting converting, trying to convert, instead of having this part-time, full-time, just converting it all into full-time equivalent? Yeah, we can do that.
Another good idea?
And current/future average monthly payroll? I'm like, hey, well, is it current or is it future?
Irrelevant.
I'm like, it is. It's like, so you just want me to guess? Because I don't know. You know, I mean, I have a goal, but goals are just that. They're just goals. We don't know if it's gonna actually take place.
Yeah.
And you can say whatever you want there.
That's why, that's kind of why I think that we should just eliminate that.
August.
No.
Hey, Joe.
Bringing back the number, X amount of employees.
I don't think they can hear you, Joe.
Hey, Mark. Yeah, you're, I can't tell if you're mumbling or if you're far away from the mic.
I can't tell either.
Yeah. Could you, could you do a summary of your opinion? I couldn't really hear what you were saying.
Oh, what you said before, we want you to say it again. About the committee, maybe, a part of that.
Like and loud.
Well, the first thing I said, well, it was a question, really, of me trying to wrap my head around this, is this committee, like, I don't feel comfortable with a committee being responsible for passing these grants out. And I thought it was fine for the program, like, the small business program. Like, I'm fine with not, with, I'm not fine with a committee of, that's made up of some non-city organizations being responsible for spending our taxpayers' money.
Okay.
So that was, that's just a concern. I don't know, the, I don't know the full picture on that, the full story on that. But then also, going along with what Wendy said, we can't back that up, but that maybe we should eliminate some of these strangling restrictions? Like, if we're gonna do this to, like, the part about hiring, or hiring back X number of employees and keeping them on board so long before you get the money? Or is it, if you don't, you have to pay it back?
Yeah. The thought, the thought would be if you don't hit that target, that you would be responsible to reimburse the city.
Well, if they can't do that, they're not gonna be able to reimburse the city.
It's, it's, it would be an act of good faith, frankly.
To me, that mimics federal grants that we get for, like, the SAFER grants and the COPFAST grants, where the state, the federal, they give you all this money to pay the firefighter or police officer's salary for, you know, to scale down for four years. But you have to commit to keeping that firefighter. You can't just fire them or start firing people. So I liken it to that. I think it can be done. It may be a little harder on a small business.
Yeah, but a small business is a lot less stable than the city of Lebanon.
But it's still a grant process. It's still part of the grant process.
We're talking a $2,000 cap, though.
Right. But I mean, I see the point in it, that it's part of grants.
We had this debate internally with staff. Should it be a grant, a forgiven loan? It really, I think, is just how comfortable you are with, you know, how many checkpoints, if you will, you have associated with it.
Personally, I think it should just be a case-by-case basis. That should be evaluated by council, but that's just me.
Well, I do have, you know, those concerns I mentioned about the form, actual verbiage on the form itself. But beyond that, I still do think it would be nice to hit pause for at least seven days, one week, just to see how more of these federal and state programs are coming down and how that's working out. Because it seems to me that virtually everyone that we're talking about is eligible. And they're sizable.
Yeah, it's changing.
But if we were gonna take a pause, it needs to be no more than, to be no more than a week. Because when you talk to the chamber, when you talk to businesses who feel as though, because I know for a fact of one landlord in particular that owns a number of buildings, is a landlord for a number of them, he is unwilling to budge, he is unwilling to help. The business, the small businesses are absolutely struggling. They're frustrated, they're concerned, they're worried. $2,000 isn't, is, I mean, it's taxpayer dollars, yes. But it's, it's a, it's a show of the city that we are, have an investment in them and that we are here for them. It's, it's those people that are not getting relief. They don't see themselves as getting a relief to pay the next month's rent, to be quite honest. I don't know. I'm a supporter of doing something, all your ideas of how to change this or tighten this up. I have a kind of a, not that I don't, I mean, when we think about a committee, a committee was okay for giving a lot more money out. And you were, people were okay with that. People were okay with giving $10,000 out. But not to have that same committee give $2,000 out and take a look at that. The city is actively and totally involved in the process of that committee. It's not a committee that is separate from, and you can, and I think a committee can have any council member sit in on that committee. You're not exempt from being a part of it. But to me, a Chamber of Commerce, Main Street Lebanon, people like that, business savvy. An example would be, to me, having a Wendy Monroe on there, who is a business owner. Somebody like that. I mean, you have your own, you have your own business as well, who are savvy with having an understanding of that. But I think including key people in the community that are very business savvy with regard to the inner workings of many of these businesses in this community should have some input as well as city input. It's not like we're not, we are not a part of that process. We are. But I want people that have true knowledge, business sense and knowledge of that being on the committee. I want people who really know what they're, have, are savvy and have knowledge about that.
Yeah. I guess something that everybody, it's still, in this time, it's easier for people to act on emotion. You see those same savvy people making a run on the grocery store, just like everybody else, not always making rational decisions. And
So you're saying the committee would not be making rational decisions in regard to these grants?
Everybody's capable of making irrational decisions. I just, $2,000 just doesn't, it's not a lot of money to, like, put people through, you know, make them jump through hoops to get. But then, again, like, I just don't like that.
Well, also, I definitely agree on that in terms of, maybe it's making it a little simpler, for that $2,000.
Yeah, if we're gonna.
I definitely support that. This is really, in the scheme of things, a drop in the bucket for what these very small, 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 small businesses are dealing with and struggling with.
I mean, we, I think, I think it's, we all want for our businesses to do well. We all want to just jump in and help. But I just don't know about the
I have a
that committee making the call there.
My, go ahead.
Somebody, go ahead, Mark.
I have a couple of questions. I know there are some protections in regards to evictions and basically what owners of buildings can, the things that they can levy on their tenants. I haven't really dug into it, but I have read some stuff about it. Is, does anybody know, number one, does anybody know anything about that from a federal and a state level? And is that something that we can then maybe double down on from a municipal level? And then, number two, has anyone been in contact with the Chamber or Main Street about, I guess, basically the needs of their constituents? Like, what are they, what are they hearing? I know that we all are frequently using the businesses in town where we can. We talk to those business owners. But do they have a general sense as a whole what they are, what they're going through and what they need? And sorry, number three, I am for making this easier. I don't, I think the spirit of what we're looking for is, with $2,000, is really the small, the very small businesses who might only have one employee, and it might only be sole proprietor, brick and mortar. And that money's gonna go directly to paying rent. Or, so they might not even be able to show a loss in employee. I'm sure they'd be able to show a loss in income, though. So that's, I just circle back around. But I'm definitely for making it easier. And I like the committee, just because hopefully they could, they could make it more efficient because they are so involved and based on the representatives that we have in it. So, sorry. I just want to get all, I want to get all my points in, so I could just listen.
So to answer a few of them, Mark, if you know something better, please, just, from what I've been hearing, there's no, there is no eviction ban currently in Ohio. I know other states have looked in that. There was a request a few days ago by the governor that, please be kind, but there wasn't an order to it.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of reasons behind that. So that
Yeah.
And then, from a legal standpoint, I think the, it's not really aid, but an option that's, could be used here is, in a lot of contracts, there's something called force majeure, which is, or force majeure, however you pronounce it, is kind of an act of God, where normally you have a two-year lease, unless an act of God happens, and plagues generally are considered that. So instead of being on the hook for you paying the rest of the year, the landlord, in a somewhat act of mercy, could say, if you don't have money, you don't owe me the rest of the lease, but you still need to leave.
Yeah.
Which is not what we want for the infrastructure of our city.
No, no.
Mark, I think you asked a question about, Scott, you and I can talk about that because we've had a lot of contact with the Director of the Chamber and Main Street Lebanon, who are very supportive, Scott, you can speak to this a little, talk to, are very supportive of doing something for businesses, especially very small. Mark, as you talk about very small, sole proprietor businesses, or one-employee businesses who are, may not qualify or not right away. You want to speak to that? But they're very supportive of doing something for their, for their business communities.
Yeah, I think that summarizes it, you know, perfectly. We've run this by the Chamber of Commerce Director, trying to get her feedback. I think there's a lot of uncertainty out there right now. Obviously, they're being economically impacted significantly, and there's a lot of uncertainty as to when help may come. And I think some businesses are probably a little bit more lined up and adept at tapping into some of those state and federal resources. Others, for whatever reason, just aren't able to, or aren't as proficient as that. Or struggling to work through the system.
Yeah.
So I think it varies quite a bit. You know, I know from staff's perspective, we, you know, we put a lot of emphasis on building relationships with the business community. And, I mean, one of the ways that I definitely look at this as an opportunity to, you know, continue to build those good relationships with our businesses through a program like this. So I think there is some benefit there in terms of, you know, the city, you know, showing that support as part of our retention efforts.
There, if I could, just, hopefully everyone can hear me very briefly. Councilmember Matthews was correct. There's no moratorium on evictions. And one part of the reason for that is evictions for cause cover a wide range of circumstances. At, you know, domestic violence. If somebody's in a property and they're actively destroying the property, they can be evicted. So eviction isn't just limited to non-payment of rent. Okay? So there was sort of guidance or request by the governor for people not to evict, people for not, non-payment of rent while this, while we're in the midst of this crisis. I just wanted to make the point that all of council's input has been, you've made excellent points. A lot of the concerns that have been addressed are more than valid. This is, you know, to the extent that I've been involved with it, and Scott, and Dan, and Jason, this is a very, we don't usually put together aid programs this quickly. Okay? This was very much done, and I don't want council to lose, sort of, the, I'm not excusing any shortfalls. I'm just saying this was done very quickly, mainly so that we had something to present to council that made some kind of sense. And sort of try to walk the line between giving people, giving the businesses in town immediate aid that's needed, not a lot of aid, frankly, but an immediate sort of shot in the arm if there's a small business to whom $2,000 to whom two thousand dollars was gonna be a make or break thing over the next month or two. So we try to balance the need for immediate assistance for, for some probably smaller folks because frankly, larger businesses, larger organizations are going to have a relationship with a banker. They're going to have access to a, a greater number of sources of funding, but to somebody who's maybe put their retirement, you know, their retirement savings into a small shop, they might not have a, an existing relationship with a commercial banker, they might not have. I know there are attorneys and bankers for relatively modest amounts advising people on how to get aid. Um, I listened to, uh, and I would advocate it was a good seminar, there's a website called Empower U and they had a seminar on essentially um various SBA payroll guarantee programs and so forth. This, this aid was really not necessarily meant to be directed toward a larger, highly sophisticated, we're not necessarily counting them out, but it, it was more geared toward, you know, businesses in town that are very small shops and to whom two thousand dollars could possibly be a make or break. In terms of a lot of the hoops, you know, that was sort of a, an attempt to balance the need for immediate aid with the fact that, you know, city council as well as the administration were all fiduciaries of tax money. So we're trying not to be wasteful and trying to direct the money to where it could do the most good and to sort of, you know, say, look, you know, we'll, we'll tide you over if you can, but or we'll tide you over if we can, but you have to, you have to invest that money back in your employees and, and, and in your business. Um, in terms of actually um enforcing, getting any of this money back from people that don't do that for two thousand dollars, frankly, it's not gonna happen. It's not gonna be economically um prudent to go after people for these small amounts. Um, so we're, we're asking these people to think through this and we're asking them to make certain commitments with the knowledge that we're basically trusting them to do this.
Yes, exactly.
Um, so we're placing a lot of trust in our smaller businesses that they're gonna plow this back into their business, that this is gonna make some meaningful difference to them, um, but it is not by any wild stretch of the imagination and it should not be portrayed as being a perfect um program. This is money that was um that we have earmarked for business expansion. I think, you know, the administration, if I could speak for Scott or, I mean, as a group, that what I got was in times that are this dire, um preserving an existing business could be just as important as expanding an existing business. I mean, I don't really know how many people are thinking about expanding right now other than, you know, restructuring experts. I'm sure they're, they're looking at uh, uh, some boom times ahead. Um, but I just wanted to make that point to, to council and to the public, that it is by no means um perfect, it is by no means categorical, universal, or, or really meant to be um something that, that is likely gonna be like permanently incorporated into our budget or, or anything of that nature. Not that it couldn't be, but, you know, it would have to be refined. This is, was done fairly quickly and we were relying on some input, you know, some, some, you know, limited input, but mostly common sense and, and what we've sort of felt people were asking us to do.
Well, you know, you gave a really good example when you were talking, um, and it speaks to a business here right, not too far from us. A sole proprietor, may have a part-time employee, took all of her retirement money to open up this business and has attempted to try to figure out and maneuver through and it is, and, and a landlord that is unwilling to negotiate on the rent. So take all your retirement money, you open up a new business. Um, you're pretty much a sole proprietor, uh, to get, to get a little bit of financial relief. Financial relief is very, very, very important, which can either make or break her of staying within our, within our, uh, within our community. So it, it's those, and if you talk, if you talk to some of those people and you, you hear their struggles and their frustrations, it's, it's real for some, for, for many of them. Especially those um specialty shops, not necessarily your restaurants, the ones that are totally, that are absolutely and totally closed down or trying to do a little bit of online thing or whatever. Um, those are those that are absolutely struggling. Um, and a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars, anything as a way of good faith effort to say that as a city that we are um being supportive, being supportive of their, uh, their, their, their business. Um, as, as they get, as they attempt to get other relief and there are other res, other resources available to them, um, this to me is a mo, uh, there were, I walked, I walked the streets and talked to these businesses all the time.
Always have.
We, we, and one was, the, the one I'm talking about was, was interviewed yesterday and it's a real struggle.
Yeah.
And as she said, it's heartbreaking right now for her.
We have one of the, the street that barely survived last year. They were just, they were, they, they almost break even, they were doing a little better with Christmas. They, I don't know what their fiscal dates are.
Yeah.
Christmas got them a little ahead, but now, so it's, it's, and it's the boutiques, that's why, those little shops are what make our downtown.
I, I um think that, number one, Joe, I understand what you're saying about who's um actually making the final decisions on it, but council made the decision to um make this, when it was an expansion budgeted item pool of money. Um, you know, we administer it that way, you know, our charter is that we're not micromanagers, we're, we're a council, city manager type of government. And so that's, we do this kind of thing all the time, really. Um, so that part I'm not worried about, but I do understand what you're saying.
I'm new, sorry.
So, no, and, and it's not a, it's not a new and, and, or anything like that. It, it can just be a, you know, a difference of opinion on it and that's fine. Um, but from what I'm thinking about and hearing, I'm thinking maybe we um for program eligibility requirements, it currently says fifty part-time, full-time employees or less. It sounds to me like this would be a lot more beneficial for five or less, five full-time equivalents or less. Um, these are the kind of people that it's really going to make a difference for. If you've got fifty employees, you probably have a relationship with a, a lender that's going to be able to get you, you know, through this. Um, but I'm thinking of the little, you know, places on the corner that it's run by the family members.
Yeah.
Um, and so I, I think that might be a good um, a, a good change in, in the plan.
It's a commercial storefront then.
Yeah, still, still have um a storefront, yes.
Brick and mortar.
But, yeah, brick and mortar. Um, and then um one thing we said, I think, earlier was not to have the loss of income and um employee layoffs, but have it be one or the other. Um, and work from that way. In the application where it says business information, um, not section, um, Roman numeral two down there, have nailed down that impact date beginning March first of 2020. I'm still ending on, with the loan forgiveness part happening at August the 30th if everything's met uh by then, keeping that the same. Um, Dan may want to weigh in on this. Um, originally our pool of money was eighty thousand dollars, is that correct? What was it?
Yeah, but the budget amount is eighty thousand dollars. We do have one request in for a ten thousand dollar.
Okay, so we're looking at about seven, but, but if we stayed with the eighty and we're probably as a city gonna look at an impact of maybe, uh, I don't, what, what do you think would be our, our um percent of income loss due to this as a city? Um, Dan, do you have just a wild guesstimate? I mean, is twenty percent um way overblown? Is it gonna be five percent?
Can you, can you say that again, Mr. Shope?
Our, um, our loss of income because of this as a city? What kind of number in your head? What are, what are the numbers that are kind of bouncing around? Are you thinking we're going to be down twenty percent on our overall income this year because of this? Or ten percent or five percent? What, just, uh, we know it's a guess.
Right, um, you know, Scott and I have had some discussions, so why don't you give me about a week and then we'll, we'll get some better numbers for you. It's gonna be significant, no question about that.
Well, my question, the reason for my question is I'm trying to, um, a week might not meet my need. I'm sure it's gonna be helpful to the city, but it's not meeting my immediate need. Um, you know, I, I'm thinking maybe we scale back the pool a little bit.
Yeah, I, I think, and I, I've probably, I failed to mention this.
Yeah, because as I said, we're talking, we're gonna use that all that money.
We were looking at maybe taking forty thousand
Okay.
pot and applying it towards this, and that was, yeah.
And keeping that thirty thousand for redevelop, re.
Expansion type.
Yeah, or, or reserves.
Yeah, if, if we do something like that, I think, you know, we're, that's helpful because we, we are looking at um very unstable, you know, um uh cash flow type thing for the city, even though we've, you know, and, and thank you um to those who have served before me anyway, for sure, for um the cash reserves and things of that nature that the city has planned for and, and strives to maintain. That's good, solid fiscal management. So that's where I am kind of on it.
Sorry, I didn't make, we've lost the video of us. I don't think they can see us now.
So can you guys see us?
Not, we're, really, this is big anyway.
They, they can at least hear, so um I, I like the
When you can only hear.
They were only this big.
I liked the idea of taking the number of employees down and going, and also the change we already talked about, which was full-time equivalents. And we did talk about a number of date changes, so we actually made quite a few changes to the form.
Yeah.
Um, there might be others worth making.
Could, could we look at making some changes? How are people feeling about um not waiting a week and doing it tonight? If we got, if we were to be very specific in terms of the form and get things taken care of so that people are on board with your, one of, your idea that um scaling it down to forty, five employees, not doing the, um, the, the date, the, um, not going with the
Not letting them decide what the impact dates were.
Yes, yes.
We need to be, we need to compare apples to apples and everybody's using the same date.
And putting all that in there and how would people feel with, I, I mean, I feel that businesses, there's a true urgency with some of these very teeny, tiny sole proprietor um businesses, brick and mortar businesses that are, that are the Anna's popcorn, the Thimble Gardens, I mean, Anna's Garden is, is family, that's, it's family, it's, that, that's it. Um, those that we, I mean, you know, um, do, do, do something, um.
And Adam, you had a question or a comment?
I, I did have, I had a comment along with the, the mayor's comments of the, the urgency and the need uh to provide this is, is important because there is so much uncertainty, being able to do something quick and give that, two thousand dollars, a small business over a year or with many, many employees, that's not going to make or break, but with one, two, six employees, that two thousand dollars for two months, which is hopefully what we're gonna have to deal with. Uh, if not, there's gonna be larger issues that we're all gonna have to consider. But having that certainty to make those decisions on whether they can stay open or not, that two thousand dollars can go a long way. Uh, and echoing what the mayor was saying, echoing others is, there is a lot of support out there, but being able to provide transparency, being able to provide that small uh direct support for those that we live in our community here with, uh, is something special that we can do. For some, it may just be token and uh similar to the large uh CARES Act that's going, there's some that uh may be eligible for it but don't need it and hopefully either the committee weeds that out or their own conscience weeds that out. Uh, but still, it is something I think would be very helpful uh for that, especially as Mr. Shope was mentioning, uh tacking a little bit of the, the money to make sure we're still being good stewards through choppy times.
I think taking it down to forty, I've been, I've pulled up my, um, I didn't print off the proposed adjudge, adjustments to our budget and with the exception of one line in here, I think we're showing that, um, you know, reducing our budget is showing some good faith of using taxpayer money well, but we've trimmed down, we have the possibility of trimming a lot of stuff down to save our own money and I think this is, I'm okay, I was never against giving the money out, I just like I said, I want to make sure and there's where, to me, where the committee comes in handy because the, the chambers and the Main Streets, they're gonna know these businesses, they're gonna know which ones are doing okay, um, things like that. But I'm, I'm looking at, like I said, our proposed budget adjustments and, you know, we've got a pretty good chunk of change that we could save if we have to, so I, I think it is gonna be a good, um, a good thing.
I, I agree um with that, I agree with what Adam said, um, and I also agree with Dan's caution about, you know, what kind of forecast you think you'll have in another week. Um, this shot in the arm, hopefully from the feds will, I hope it does what they think it will do. I don't know, um, I hope it does. Um, if it doesn't, I think that, I mean, I, I, we're in this community, we, it's breaking all of our hearts to see what is happening like overnight. Companies that were doing great are just like done and that's terribly heartbreaking and I, my fear is that companies that are not affected so immediately are going to be affected, it's just gonna take a little longer to catch up to them. But as more and more, I mean, some consumers still have jobs, you know, the people that work for the teachers, people that work for the government, they're also getting paid. Um, some industries are still paying their employees, so they're doing okay for now, but as more and more people run out of money, it's, it, the uh domino effect could potentially occur for quite some time. Um, I hope that doesn't happen, but it is possible.
And I'm gonna tell you, it, it absolutely makes me angry that we have a landlord that's unwilling to work with tenants.
That's very disappointing, very disappointing.
We bend over backwards to help people with buildings in here. We've done, we've done so much to help people get into this town and that we have a landlord that's unwilling to budge, just, it angers me.
It's very unfortunate.
It's unfortunate and we can't do anything about it.
It's not the golden rule.
No, it's not, it is not, and I, I, you know, I, I'm not gonna make any assumptions, but um I I can, I can, I can only hope it's not a landlord that we've had to, or that we've offered to help in any way with anything and then that person not extend it to their tenants. Um, but again, I'm, I'm a zip it at that.
Landlords have to eat too.
Um, we're on record here, I would say nothing.
Yes, I would say nothing on record.
Um, so what are, or any other?
I'm good, I'm good with it.
Hey, hey.
If we make this a minor change.
Go through and make that matter now, all the comments, revision. So the, the program would be um up to forty thousand dollars. Uh, in terms of program eligibility requirements, um, it would be, uh, the business needs to have at least, uh, or no more than five full-time equivalent employees. Uh, in terms of the economic impact, it would be um either fifty percent or more loss of income or fifty percent or more in employee layoffs. Uh, when we talk about priority being given to businesses that are, uh, right now, we've got it listed as not eligible for federal estate programs, I think we talked about adding the word priority being given to businesses that have not applied or el. or eligible. So, if you have applied, you're kind of maybe at the end of the list.
I see your point about, if you don't want to take them out if they haven't applied yet, but if they're eligible, they should apply.
Yeah, and that's where I thought.
So, I'm not, I don't, if they're eligible, we might still want to leave that. But my point was, virtually everybody's eligible.
I can make it a tiebreaker.
And the thing is, the thing is, the way the verbiage is, it's priority will be given. It isn't saying you can't, you don't qualify for this if you're eligible for that.
Yeah, so I'm okay with that. I'm okay with the statement as it was. The reason I brought that up is just to point out that I feel like everybody, virtually, I mean, there's a few, but there's, virtually everybody's eligible, so I'm okay with it as it is, but that was my comment. Isn't everybody eligible?
Can we, as a city, take all the programs you've mentioned and make sure that all the businesses are aware of those?
Well, the chamber, the chamber is doing an excellent job of communicating that.
The chamber and Main Street Lebanon have done an amazing job communicating with all of their, even, even those people that are not members, they are communicating with every single business, so it's not just their members. So, it's, they are, they're showing no...
The chamber is doing a bang-up job on that. So, kudos, kudos to Angie Smith on that one.
Okay, good.
Good.
Okay. In terms of, we'll define March 1st as kind of the start, starting point in terms of the economic impact.
Can you hear Scott? Mark's trying to say something.
Go ahead, Mark.
No, I would, Scott, when you finish, I'll say what I was going to say.
Okay. So, March 1st would be the, kind of the defining date. We, in terms of, when we talk about number of part-time employees, full-time employees, or we're just going to convert that into full-time equivalent, and then, right now, we're asking what the current slash future average monthly payroll is, we would just eliminate future and just where you're at right now. So, those are all the changes. I know there was some discussion about whether or not just making this a grant versus forgivable loan. The council wants to provide direction on that.
I'm okay with it the way it is.
Okay, great.
Saying it's a forgivable loan, but understanding that it might end up being a grant.
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate everybody's feedback.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I, number one, I just want to thank staff for how quickly they responded to this and put this together. So, I know it's, I'm sure it's difficult to think of all the legalities and things like that. I would, I would tend to want to take out the part of eligibility, because basically, every person is eligible. Like, even if you're a sole proprietor, if you're a 1099 contractor, like, literally, everybody's going to be eligible for federal dollars. And then, the other thing, I would, I would, I would up the threshold to 75% instead of 50. I mean, if they're, if they're at 50, they're, they're not long for this world anyway. If they're, if they're a small business under five and five full-time equivalents, and they've lost 50% of their revenue, I mean, I would assume we need to, we need to up that, up that threshold to incentivize more people to, to apply and get, and get that infusion quicker.
So, you're saying 25% loss?
Yeah. I mean, a 25% loss over a quarter is...
It is huge, that's true.
Yeah, okay, good.
I mean, a 50% loss is, I mean, you're, nothing is, you're done.
But they're all, I mean, most of those that are going to apply are going to be below 50% anyway. But, I mean, I hear you. I'm probably fine either way on that one. I'll defer to the rest of you on that one, whether it's 25 or 50, I don't care.
Mark, I think, I think that the, it's, I think that the priority will be given to businesses not eligible is still a good thing to have in there, because even though we have a hard time imagining somebody wouldn't be eligible, there may be somebody out there that isn't, and we don't want to, you know, if they're part of our city and, and they, according to the committee, would, you know, would be a good investment, I think they ought to, you know, I don't think we ought to remove that, but if we do, it's okay, too.
I think it doesn't hurt to leave it in, because, like you said, it just says priority, so it gives us a complete out either way. I don't see how it's harmful to have it in there.
I think it shows us, we're not going to pay our bills.
My point is not that we eliminate the question. My point is that we, maybe we put it in like, the subcategories down in the, like, the Excel spreadsheet, like, are you eligible? My thing is, maybe not put it up in the top, because if the spirit, if the spirit of this is to help our, our small businesses on, I mean, from, from Main Street to Columbus Avenue, to, to Broadway, I mean, to help our small, small, small businesses, I would assume that everybody would be able to qualify federally, because that's basically everything they've been hearing. So, if they see that as a point, like, well, I'm, I think I'm eligible, so they might not even, they might even, they might not even put in the app. But, I don't know. I, that was just my...
I don't want, I personally don't want to ask them if they're eligible or not, because they're going to say, no, I'm not eligible, and that could be completely false. So, I, I like it as is, but...
But it may be that, that somebody's eligible, but in terms of getting immediate resources in order to maintain for a little bit of time, they, they need those dollars more immediately.
Do you want to ask them if they have applied? Because if they're eligible and they haven't applied, I'd be like, well, why haven't you applied?
Or not trying to apply and they're trying to work through the system. I keep using this one business.
I just want to, I just want to kill the, I, I just pulled up the email with the, with the updated, and it says, priority will be given. It's really hard for me to hear what everybody's saying, so I, I just, I just put it all together, I'm sorry.
All right, so you're good with it as it is? Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Okay.
I would just say up at the 75.
Maybe, maybe next time Adam Matthews will have another pair of headphones you can borrow.
I have one other, one other.
Oh, earbuds, okay.
I'm struggling to hear.
I have one other thing.
I do have another pair like this, if you, if you want to borrow.
There you go. Now, if you play Call of Duty. In the eligibility requirement, back to the email that Dan sent us, what about the businesses that are behind on taxes and utility payments? Does, obviously, obviously Dan knows who they are, but is there something in there that says prior to March 1st, you cannot have voted two months, two years' worth of taxes and haven't paid your electric bill in six months? I mean, I don't know where a cutoff might be in that, but...
And I think the reason is because if you were struggling before this, then your struggles have nothing to do with this. You are already struggling.
How do we eliminate those businesses from the get-go?
We had a statement in there that basically said that they had to be in compliance with all city ordinances.
And I don't see it.
Thinking, yeah, and I'm trying to find where the heck that went, because I know it was in the...
But it should, well, it probably should be in there if it's not.
If it's not in there, we'll put it back in, because that was kind of our catch-all that came from.
Well, that was the thing, and I, you know, we all, the first time this came out, we all went, yeah, yeah, this is good. And then when he sent his email, it's like, well, crap.
Okay, so that needs to be included.
Yeah, $2,000, they're going to hack them.
Yeah, we'll get that back in there. I'm not sure what happened there.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, that's good.
Put that in there.
Any other things that anybody would like to add to that? I really, I wanted to say, I really appreciate everybody working through everything, because not all communities, I'll just say that, have been able to work as effectively as we have, and just really glad to see that. So, really appreciate, really appreciate the process. Really, really, really appreciate it. Wendy, thank you. Really do.
Do we need a, yeah, do we need a revision, or can I sponsor as, as recommended by, with the revision from Mr. Messer?
So, Adam, you're going to make a motion to support the revisions that have been identified and read to us tonight?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Everybody, if you guys all want to be...
Yeah, that's my, yeah, that's my.
I think we all...
Did they adopt, I mean...
Yeah, they adopted your thing. That was, that was my thing.
They lost us again.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Shope?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody. Great work. All right.
Okay, just a couple of updates we did. So, staff did a phone interview, a kind of a WebEx interview for two finalists for our comprehensive plan update, so they were both good interviews. We're going to kind of continue the process of narrowing down who the recommended firm is that we'll be bringing to city council. Right now, we're kind of tentatively targeting for that first work session in May, to kind of have them come in and do a briefing to city council, and hopefully then move forward with the comprehensive plan contract and process. So, I just wanted to give council an update on that. Existing fire station RQ, obviously, we had the interview scheduled, we've had to push those back. Right now, we're targeting that second work session in May. We're hoping that that'll be okay, to have the three firms who submitted on that, again, come into council work session and do the presentation. So, right now, those are tentative dates, but just want to let council know we are continuing to work on both, both of those projects. I emailed out council, again, kind of myself, Dan, really, all of our staff have been working on identifying potential budget adjustments in response to the economic situation. And, you know, staff's prepared to kind of put these into place now, but I did want to make sure council had that information, see if there are any questions. Right now, if you look at, you know, the cost-saving measures, it's approaching $600,000 in expense reductions for this year's budget. We feel, we feel comfortable with these changes. Obviously, we'd rather be at full swing, but I think staff feels comfortable making these changes, and we think it's a good, at least at a minimum, you know, an initial step. I think, you know, Dan and I will continue to work on monitoring and looking at the modeling, but we felt like we should put these in place now, knowing that there is going to be a significant impact. I'd rather make these decisions now and let our staff know now, so that, you know, everybody's kind of working off of the same information. So, I really just wanted to make sure council was aware of that, and if there are any questions, just to have you all...
No, I think that's excellent, though. So, thank you, and thank you, Dan, for helping with that. Yeah, I think you, we can't snooze on this one. If it ends up and everything's, gets back to normal quicker than we think, we can always, we got more money, we can always spend it. But, yeah, I think that's wise.
When were we supposed to hire the police officer?
So, we, we actually had four openings. One was a, an additional new hire that was budgeted, and then we had three open positions. We've either hired or made an offer to three of those positions. The fourth one was going to be, you know, kind of at that same time, but, you know, it's programmed for the full year. But, you know, I think, talking to the chief, two things. Right now, you know, we had a couple okay candidates, none that we felt like were home runs, and B, I think, you know, this is, you know, a step that we wanted to take, just to kind of, if you look at staffing costs, obviously, I'm going to look at unfilled positions first, so...
Did the three openings, did we have retirements or something, or they were just kind of...
Yeah, we had a retirement, we had Officer Wetzel vacancy, and then we had an officer who didn't make it through probation.
I just, I just want to make, because I know we're running minimum staffing a lot.
Right.
And I just want to make sure that we have, that we're not going to get below that, and there's your overtime right there, and you have to start calling all these people in extra.
Right. This gets us, I mean, we're at the staffing levels we were at last year with, with the three hires that we've already made, so...
All right.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I have two things. Number one, I wasn't picking sides between landlords versus business owners who are in a lease with them. I was just saying that we're, we're all affected in some way by this, that you can't, you can't say that this person's loss is more or less significant to them than theirs is to them. So, anyway, the second thing was, do we, do we know anything more about the archway over Mulberry that, any revised, updated?
It's still in production. Right now, we actually reached out to them, I think it was last week. Right now, looking at the schedule and looking at where they're at in production, it should be here May, so it's still moving its way through the process for getting built and getting installed.
Is that going to be installed by our city?
No. We've got, we've got, we've got a contractor set up to do like the concrete foundations, so the actual concrete foundations and that work's going to be done privately. I think in terms of actually setting the archway, that may be done by our electric crews, I'm not 100% sure on that, but I know the foundations are not, this can be done privately. And we've already got a contractor lined up for that.
Okay. I know there's cure times on concrete and all that kind of stuff. Also, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind if we were allowed to like, be a part of like, watching some of that be put together.
Yeah.
I don't think there's going to be a ribbon cutting part or anything like that, but I just kind of like to know when, when that is going to go up, because I would like to go out and see it.
Sure.
And when the time comes, we'll have to be sensitive to public perception of, oh, well, you just last week spent this money when this whole, well, when, that's not how it really went down. Like, it was spent, yeah, this was spent a long time ago, it just was, like, we would have loved to have had this last year, it just took forever. So, as long as, you know, just be a little careful about perception and how that's communicated.
Yeah, I agree.
But it is a positive thing, and we need to have some positive things going on right now, so...
Yeah, for sure. So, did you have anything else?
Just one last thing. I just, I just wanted to thank everybody here for, you know, just being, being willing to come in and get to work, get your, get your hands dirty and do something positive for our community. That's it, thanks.
Yeah, thanks. Doug, you have anything?
Well, I just want to say thank you to the community for acting responsibly. I wish that our state government had allowed us to make those decisions ourselves, rather than bringing down certain edicts and mandates, which I don't agree with what they have done and forced upon us, but I do agree that we need to be responsible. I prefer when somebody allows me to keep my liberties and then act responsibly with them, rather than being treated otherwise. So, I wanted to say that, just so that'll be on record, and nobody will hear it, probably, but...
I'll listen to it, Doug.
Thanks, Joe. But I do, I am impressed. I'm outdoors a lot because of, you know, how much I cycle and things like that. And, man, the bike trail has been really busy, which is good, but people other than the family units seem to be keeping their social distance and trying to, at least. Sometimes those things can't be helped, but it's good to see people out exercising, because one of the best ways to avoid this kind of thing is to just stay generally healthy. And, and so I've been very pleased with that. And, yeah, just keep that up, and even after this scare is over and after this, you know, this virus is over, and we're no longer thinking about that, continue doing that. Continue being responsible and being healthy.
Absolutely. Krista?
Nothing else.
Adam, do you have anything?
Echoing what many of the others have said, want to focus on the good. We have, the rest of this week is, this is Holy Week. Our next meeting will be after Easter, and while many of us are away from our churches, from our communities, it is still a good time of discipline, a good time of focus, and Sunday, a great time of celebration of Easter. a good time of focus, and a Sunday, a great time of celebration of Easter. It is, it is a very linton lint that we are going through right now with a lot of time for prayer and contemplation, and just prayers for all of you and the whole community.
Thank you. Mark?
Uh, man, everybody's been fantastic tonight. Um, hopefully next week we'll all be on, either in the meeting or on Zoom, so I can follow everything. But, uh, um, thank you to everyone who has picked up the ball with this, uh, this last topic. And, um, I think that the, our businesses will be thankful for that, uh, for thinking in this direction. Um, and to what, uh, to what Adam said, uh, it's very clear that, uh, if, uh, we humble ourselves, uh, before God and we, and, uh, we repent for our, our, our evil things and our wicked ways, that he will, that he will heal our land. And I, and I, that is my prayer, and that's been our prayer for our family. And, uh, as we go into Easter, I think, um, I think that's something that, that should be close to heart. Um, and that we need to be praying for those who are, who are an authority over us, even if we, uh, uh, don't understand their, their logic and will fight them on their logic, uh, if, if need be, um, but in a respectful way. So, um, yeah, so it's, uh, it's, it's great serving with you. Uh, Happy Easter, and, um, praying for each and every one of you.
Great, thank you. Um, Scott, you will, it's gonna be really important to be able to get this information out to all of our businesses, obviously reaching out to Angie and Linda from both organizations. Plus, if something could be posted that we could all share as well, um, to everybody, wanna make sure that, uh, we're just not focusing on just particular members, but everyone that would be, would be eligible. So I think that'll be really important. Um, I also wanted to say, I appreciate all the hard work that everybody does and just being respectful of everybody's perspective, um, their input was really, was really helpful this evening. Um, and taking a look just at that application, just fine tuning it, making it make sense, making it usable and friendly and supportive of our business. Um, that's just very, very, very important. Um, just continue to do what we do and continue to market our city, and we'll get all through this and we'll be better for it. And, um, united, united we are, and, um, we'll, we'll get through this. And, uh, blessed Easter to, to each and every one of you and your families. So with that, I will entertain, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Just one last thing.
Yeah.
Is it, is it possible for us to, like, either, either get an updated copy of this or like get it, get a, like a list of the businesses that we, we were able to give these grants to? Like as, as time goes?
Yeah, we'll have a list as they apply.
No, is that what you were asking?
Say it, say it again, is what I was asking.
That you'll find out who applies?
No.
I didn't think so.
Is that, as we give them, like, I, I'd kinda like to know.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll post this on our website, we'll put it on our social media. So there'll be some folks that are gonna be able to download this directly, um, off of our website, they may not. But I can definitely, as the applications come in, I can definitely, um, you know, report to council, you know, what applications we've got in, if that's, if that's what you would like.
No, just like who's, who's received them, you know, cause for me personally, I, you know, if I know who's hurting the most, that's who I wanna go and give some of my.
Is it public information? That is public information, right? When, once, I mean, if funds are, are granted to someone or this loan.
It's all public?
Oh, absolutely.
So I mean, it'll be available to us, yes.
Okay, yeah.
But let's say you know, let's say you know a business in particular, like I know a couple, obviously, um, reach out to them and let them know that this is, this is available to them and to ask them to apply.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll email their revised application to all of council, so everybody has that one.
Thanks.
We hope to get that, we should get it done tomorrow, so our goal is to get it out tomorrow.
Great. Okay.
Want some new junk?
Sir, second?
Second.
Dan, please call the roll.
Okay, Mayor, if you need one moment, I just wanna make sure council was aware that, um, with Scott's support, we are staffing the office, um, between 7:00 AM and 1:00 PM for a shift with two employees, and then two more between 1:00 PM and 7:00 PM each day. So we've actually expanded our, um, customer service remotely. So, um, I mean, they're in the office, but if people are calling in, we're still taking those calls, obviously. So I just wanna make sure you're aware of that. Approximately eight employees are rotating through that, um, process right now. And then just wanna thank Mark Hockey, who's been great, uh, from the IT perspective, and Joe as well, Joe Hackman, for keeping us, uh, very tech savvy and able to do everything we've been able to do remotely. So, uh, just wanted to recognize the employees that are four a day, that are in the office, taking care of the city's business for us.
And we're glad they're there.
Thanks, Dan. Tony Stark, thank you very much.
Is, now, does the public know that we have two more hours of operations per day? Was there a notice that went out?
Well, the, the, the building's not open to the public. So it's, it's basically, they're doing some backend functions.
So, yeah, the public doesn't.
So, right.
They should know the hours.
Right.
For an hour.
Yeah. So Dan, call the roll, please.
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
And, uh, Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
All right, everyone, thank you for joining our meeting, April 7th, 2020. Uh, look forward to seeing everybody, uh, next week.
Mark was cracking me up.
Thank you, guys.